Public forum for the candidates. My name is Jeff Overton and I'm the president of the Police Officer Association. Um, so now if everybody can rise and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of To get started, I would like to thank the good Lord for being here, um, to host this forum for the citizens of, um, Pine Top Lakeside. Uh, we appreciate, enjoy working for the community. As law enforcement officers and dispatchers, the first law we enforce and protect is the citizens' constitutional rights in this town. Tonight, citizens will get the chance to ask questions to the candidates that are running for city council. After this forum, this forum is being recorded as you guys know, and if anybody's harassed, threatened, or intimidated by the questions they asked out in open, please notify our police department or local law enforcement agency. Um, for our moderator, I would like to introduce Dave Roberts. He's going to be moderating the public forum. He's from the White Mountain Independent. Dave?
Probably all wondering why I've asked you here tonight. It was this or the laundry, so I, I chose this and I'm glad you did too. I just want to say one thing, minds are like parachutes. They only function when they're open, so I'd like you to keep your minds open tonight and listen to what these people have to say. And with that, uh, I'm going to introduce, um, the candidates, uh, one by one. They'll come out and introduce themselves and have a seat while I introduce the next one. Vice Mayor Stephanie Irwin, Councilman Kim Webb notified the, um, association that they had prior commitments and would be unable to attend. So with that, I'd like to introduce Terry Green.
Hi, my name is Terry Green. I, uh, am running for town council because I, I believe that although we have a great town administration and a great, uh, foundation, uh, there's some things that we could do a little bit better and, and I look forward to the discussion tonight about some of our different ideas on how we can do that. As far as my background, I, I teach here at Blue Ridge High School. I've done that since about, well, I think this is my 12th year here at the high school, uh, teaching economics, uh, mostly. Uh, I also, um, uh, well, before that I was a, a county prosecutor. I was a, I prosecuted in Navajo County, Apache County, and Maricopa County over the years after I graduated from law school. Um, I spent, uh, 22 years in the Navy Reserve, retired from that in 2010 and, and was deployed a couple of times in support of those operations since 2001. And, um, I guess that's about it. I'm a member of the VFW post here, 2364 here in Pine Top Lakeside. And, uh, we, um, I'm the legal counsel and on the board of directors of the Blue Ridge Education Foundation, which I'll give a little plug for here. It's a brand new nonprofit that we just started to help raise money for some of the programs here at Blue Ridge that have sort of lost their funding, uh, due to the state budget cuts that we've suffered over the last few years. And so if you're interested in finding out more about that or how you could help us raise money or get involved, uh, be sure and touch base with me afterwards and I'll give you all the information you need. But in any event, um, it's nice to meet you and I look forward to tonight's event.
Thank you, Terry. Tamara Hayes?
Hi, thank you so much for coming. I'll step back. Um, I'm Tamara Hayes. I am running for town council because since I moved to Pine Top Lakeside seven years ago, um, we fell in love with this community. Most people, is it closer? I feel like I'm screaming at you now. Okay. Um, we fell in love with the town and most times you can find me seven days a week at the softball field, either at Woodland or Mountain Meadows. I spend about 40 hours a week of my time coaching softball, um, doing individual lessons for free, just things to help the community and the kids. My kids are both in high school now. Um, I have a freshman and a junior. And now I'm involved with the clubs here at the high school with the sad club, basketball, softball, volleyball, trying to fundraise and do everything that we can. Before coming to Pine Top Lakeside though, we were members, um, of the town of, we really didn't have a town. We were in Pinal County, we were Johnson Ranch. And I used to work, which I do now, but I used to work and I ran a $1.5 million a year business and spent most of my free time, um, working. And then we had children and I was lucky enough to be able to be a stay-at-home mom, which I value more than anything. So I was able to spend my time at the school. I worked 48 hours a week at the school as a volunteer. I was a classroom aide and I also coached junior high softball there and I was a Girl Scout troop leader and I did the Little League. Um, so I try to be involved with the community as much as I can. As my children have gotten older, I've tried to move with my kids and raise my expectations and the things that I want to do and see. There are a lot of things in Pine Top Lakeside that I really think that we can improve on. We have such a beautiful town. We have so many, so much to offer and I just don't think that we are taking full advantage of that. So that's why I'm working so hard to become your next council person because I want to develop Pine Top Lakeside to be a place that visitors come, spend their money, and go home. So, so, um, I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. Shannon Rivera?
Thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Shannon Rivera. I am now a six-year resident of Pine Top Lakeside, 10 years here in Arizona. I moved here from a suburb of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania after visiting my mom for a few weeks, turned my one-way ticket into a two-way, and here I am. I, uh, became a proud homeowner in Pine Top in 2006 and since then, I have fallen more and more in love with this town. Uh, I, I love the scenery, the air, the safety, and now that I'm raising my family here, I want to become more involved in all the aspects of this town so that I have a say in what happens and I look forward to my children's future here, along with my children's children future here. I do have an associate's degree from the Community College of Allegheny County in Monroeville, Pennsylvania. I actually studied art and have an associate's in science. I have been involved in real estate here. I was a formal, uh, real estate licensee and realtor. I have been in finance. I actually get to call myself retired from Bank of America at this young age. And I now am a stay-at-home mother where I devote a majority of my time to my two-and-a-half year old daughter running around the front row. I do have another one on the way and I am looking forward to having more children, having them in this town, raising them, and being a part of their lives along with everybody else's that is here. I am going to ask for your vote, but I want you to consider all the answers that we give tonight so that you can see how qualified or how you and the audience are able to help us and inform us more towards the needs and the wants of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Joel Russell? And as the night goes on, do not be afraid, afraid of the microphone. We do need you to speak directly into it, so, thank you.
Now, the last time I was on a stage 50 years ago, I was singing and dancing. I was in a, I had a rock and roll band. My name's Joel Russell and I'm running again for Pine Top City Council. I was born in Melmar, New York, lived there till I was 14, then my parents and I moved to California. And in 1995, my wife Toni and I came up here to the Pine Top. My military career, I spent four years in the Air Force. I went back into the service when I was 41 and I spent 17 years in the Army National Guard Mechanized Infantry. So if I get a little loud, that's why. Uh, I spent some time on planning and zoning. I was also on the Open Space Committee. I was very active with Firewise up here. Uh, in fact, I actually volunteered and got permission from the forestry department and I was actually cutting trees in Woodland Lake Park right behind my house before the rodeo tennis car fire hit. I'm a very avid reader. I've read the town codes from cover to cover. I've read the general plan from cover to cover. I've read the open reading laws from cover to cover and now I'm in the process of reading the town budget from cover to cover. And believe me, I've, some very eye-opening stuff. The reason I'm running for city council again is my bottom line is I want to give this town back to you people. You're the ones that elect planning and zoning, or excuse me, you're the ones that elect counselors to be your representatives. We speak for you. We don't speak for developers or anybody else. If I get elected, I want to see you people back in the council chambers. I want to hear what you have to say. I want to hear your opinions. I even want the county people to come in because their opinions are just as important as the people that live in the town of Pine Top Lakeside. Right now, you don't, as far as I'm concerned, and what I've seen, we don't have a voice anymore in our city government. We've got an outrageous budget as far as the city manager goes. I don't feel we need a full-time attorney. We can do one that has been put on retainer. We definitely need to do something about our police department as far as giving them a raise and maybe some more people to help them out. So I would, would hope that you would vote for me. That's where I stand. And in closing, I'd like to say that I am a member of the Shepherd of the Mountains Lutheran Church. And if I am elected, I will guarantee that I will listen to you and I will vote accordingly, even if I feel different about something else. If there's a majority of people in the council chambers that want a different thing, I believe in the majority of rules, not the minority. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Roger Williams?
I haven't seen this many lights since I tried out for Macbeth when I was in high school. I didn't get the role either, so, but anyway, it's, it's nice. My name's Roger Williams. And a little bit of background about me, um, I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from Colorado College and University of Southern California in political science and psychology. I have a Master of Arts degree in guidance and counseling from ASU. Go Devils. Um, I served in the United States Army as a, as an officer. Um, I was in the adjutant general corps and intelligence officer. Served stateside at Fort Devens, Massachusetts. And then I served overseas in Southeast Asia, some really nice spots that have now become really nice tourist attractions. They weren't such then. Um, I was a teacher in the Phoenix Union High School District, social studies, for about eight years. I was very active in the, um, programs such as the Youth at Risk Program and was that way even after I stopped teaching. I also was instrumental in, in adopting the PAGE Program. In that day and age, they called it Police Assistance to Youth Services. This is where we brought the police officers onto the campus as, as a resource officer. Now I believe they're called resource officers. I was also a founding member of the Gift of Life Program, which, when we started it in Phoenix, has blossomed or blossomed greatly over the, over the United States. So I was a founding father of that program. Um, I've been a real estate broker since 19, since 1981 and, uh, have completed over 1,100 real estate transactions successfully. I served our state as a, um, as a hearing officer to the Professional Standards and Ethics Committee. I did this for 10 years and then they retired me, but I, that was statewide. Um, I didn't have to come up here to the White Mountain Association too often, just a couple of times, so that's a good thing. Most of the, most of the arbitration complaints and ethics violations took place in Phoenix and Tucson, so that's a good thing up here. Um, I'm a certified flight instructor. I'm active in that. I've got about 5,500 hours in the air. Um, I've specialized in aerobatics. In my younger days, I did air shows, so that was a fun thing. So I'm a little bit crazy when you fly 10 feet off the ground to cut a ribbon, so you gotta think that this guy's a little bit nuts. But I became anxious to run for town council because we have previously gone back and forth from Phoenix to Pine Top. I've had a residence up here since 1985 and a commercial business, small business antique store since 1993. We've just recently bought another house and, um, sold our house in Phoenix last year. Uh, so I'm, and we've started another business up here. So now we have two small businesses and I'm also a real estate broker, so, um, it's, it's, I'm fully invested in the community. My objective was to come up here as soon as I could possibly do so and fortunately, we sold our house in Phoenix and, um, we were able to make the move and I, you know, this was my goal for, since I first purchased the house, actually, since I first started skiing up here in the early 1970s. Um, the other thing about the, the running for the town council is to, to bring about some changes. I think changes are necessary. Um, I saw some action with the town council, with the administration, that I think really needs to be addressed. And a lot of the issues need to be addressed in different ways with fresh perspective. And I've been very involved in every community I've been in and I'm trying to really get involved in this community. It's very important that, that we, we do see some changes because they are needed. I mean, it's, uh, it's obvious to all of you. And I think with a fresh perspective, I think we can bring those changes. And I've got the experience of dealing with, um, people all throughout my career that I think I can bring about some changes or at least try to bring out some changes. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. I'm going to go to the rules for the evening. Um, we've got Jeff Overton down here who will be roaming the area with a microphone. Um, raise your hand, Jeff will get to you. You can, uh, ask your question. If you're unwilling or too shy to do that, we've got Rebecca down here. Come down here and write your question out and I'll ask it for you. Ask general questions so that all candidates can respond. Uh, we, we might ask you to rephrase that question if, if we don't deem it appropriate. Do not single out one candidate when asking your questions. In other words, the question should, should apply or could be asked equally of all of them. Please be short and to the point with your question and we will ask the same of the candidates with their answers. We're going to try to hold them to roughly one minute. Uh, and I will be timing that. Please try not to ask the same question that someone else has already asked. Uh, and I will probably ask you if you felt like your question was answered. Please be polite and respectful to all of the candidates. So, first question. Oh, how awkward is that? Jim?
And thank you to all the candidates for running. Thanks to Dave and thanks to the Police Officers Association for hosting this event. Uh, we citizens appreciate it. The 2020 vision was intended to, uh, as a conduit between the people and the town government, but the conduit, but the council disbanded the committee. The town used to televise council meetings to the public to become better informed, but the council discontinued that practice. For years, the town sent out email blasts to concerned citizens who wanted to be alerted of upcoming council meetings and other important meetings, but the council also ordered that public service halted. When the Walnut Creek Working Group met, the mayor banned the public from voicing their opinions. And at last week's town-sponsored Candidates Forum, public's questions were selectively removed from the questions asked. It appears that there has, has been a steady systematic move by the town to keep the public in the dark. What role do you think the public should play in local government?
I'm going to start at this end with Terry Green.
Thank you for your question. Uh, to summarize briefly, my opinion is, is that government, no matter what level it is, local, municipal, state, national, should be as transparent as can be feasibly done given the conditions. For example, you can't be transparent about intelligence operations, but that's not exactly what we're dealing with here in Pine Top Lakeside. Local government by its very nature is grassroots. It comes from us. It comes from the people. It should be as transparent as it can be, even when it reflects poorly on those who are in the seat where they have to make the tough decisions. Um, I would very much support the television or the televising of those council meetings again, as you refer to. Putting out, um, email blasts would be another great thing. In other words, all of the things that you listed that would have increased transparency, I would support the re-establishment of those things. I, I think that it's highly important for us to, to be accountable for the actions that we take and for people to understand the deliberation that happens before those tough decisions are met. And I know that some of you have served in these kinds of positions before. You understand the kind of pressure that that can bring upon you from others who may not understand all of the ramifications of the decisions that you're dealing with. Transparency can only help to, uh, to improve that understanding so that when you do have to make a tough decision, at least people kind of know where you're coming from. So I, I hope that answers your question.
I'm going to go down the line and ask Tamara to respond to that same question.
The city-town government agency, we're here for the people. Anything that we do should be in full view of our public. I don't believe in the amount of executive sessions that our council currently holds. They do a lot behind closed doors, things that don't have to be done. There are certain things that have to be done when we're talking about matters of privacy regarding some personnel and things of that, that issue, but for the most part, we need to be available and accessible to you at all times. We can't make informed decisions without the public being informed and being able to come to us, to be able to offer opinions, to let us know what your feelings are. That's not happening now. If you've gone to any town council meetings, you'll see that they make decisions behind closed doors. They walk out, they talk about it for a few minutes, they vote, and they move on to the next thing. And most of us are left sitting there going, I don't really understand what just happened because there was really no discussion about it. So I feel that everything that has to do with the town, except for private issues with employees, should be done in full view of the town. And if a council person can't have a discussion in front of you, they shouldn't be a council person. Thank you.
Do we have a, a second question? We could move on or anyone? Ding? Okay. Pleasant surprise. Um, in that case, uh, I have a second question here. Uh, what's the most important change, in your opinion, that needs to take place in the next year? And we'll start with Shannon Rivera.
In the next year, I would love a lot of changes to take place. However, we know that a lot of decisions that a town will make do take time. One of the big decisions, uh, I believe would start is having an elected mayor as your official. Uh, having an elected mayor is crucial because that is the person in which the town chooses to represent them as a whole. And currently, right now, the town council-
Shannon, actually, if you'd step up to the mic a little more, they could turn it down. So if you would, get right up there. Thank you.
Currently, our town council does do the choosing of the mayor, uh, which they felt all of these years is the best way to do it. However, that is one of the changes that I know myself and my fellow candidates sitting here do want to try to push through as soon as possible. Uh, another one of our issues is our safety and our security. We have a phenomenal police force. Many people know our police by first name. Many of us see them driving through our neighborhoods time after time, every day, assuring that we are safe. And these officers have not been compensated for their work in as many as six years. There are many, many, um, ways with, that we can go through, um, through this change. We have, we have some, not problems, but we have some budgeting in which we can possibly restructure, take a look at, dig deep, and make sure that the people who are protecting you, your children, your grandchildren, and everybody that you know are compensated so that we can get them and we can multiply them and have more at our doorstep in case that need arise. Thirdly, I would love to see what, uh, what candidate Roger Williams will be doing. He is very excited about Save Our Parks. I know that he is going to be, um, very active in it. If in the next year or so, we can get, um, our local government, our county government, our state government involved so that we can get on a federal level a way to save our parks, that would probably be the third best issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, anything from the audience down here, down front?
Uh, my question has to do with budgeting, but it's, my question does not have to do with the, uh, city manager's amount of money he makes or the lawyer. What I'm looking for, specific details on what you're going to do, because I've heard a lot of you guys talk about the budget. Give me specific details that you're going to do to, uh, that you think we need to rein in.
I'm going to, um, have all the candidates respond to that and we're going to start with Joel Russell.
I'm glad you asked that because I just got through going through the, the budget a couple hours ago. One thing that really appalled me that I read this, if I'm reading it correctly, right now, the city library, believe it or not, has a much larger budget than the police Most of the policemen I understand are making roughly $36,000 a year. One of the legal secretaries in the, in the attorney's budget, she makes 35. What's wrong with that picture? A person that goes out, actually, you can't pay a policeman or a fireman enough money for what they do. A man that goes out and risks his life 24/7, sometimes they're by themselves, they're getting 36,000 a year. You've got somebody sitting in an office pushing a pencil that's making 35,000 a year. That's absolutely wrong. That's criminal. That's wrong. If I get elected, but in order to make, I will do everything in my power- If I get elected, but in order to make, I will do everything in my power. I will ask the tough questions, and I will read. I mean, I'm not one to sit back and just listen to what the status quo has to say. I ask questions, and I'm not afraid to ask some questions that maybe some people think, "Oh, I'd better not ask that because I might step on somebody's toes." Well, if that's the attitude you've got, I don't believe you belong in politics at all, anywhere. But our town budget, I feel, needs, it needs to be changed. And like I said, I just started recently reading it, and I'm just absolutely amazed at some of the things I found in that budget that just astonished me. So yeah, I would, and I, you know, I wouldn't just say, I mean, I'd work on that budget as long as it took to get me satisfied that it's a good budget. I'm not one to cram things through. I mean, for example, if we could, if we have to stay here till midnight answering questions, I've got no problem with that. So yeah, when it comes to the city budget, you better believe I'll be picking that thing apart with forceps and scalpels and tweezers. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Roger, Roger Williams? Do you remember the question at this point?
All the question. I think Jim's question to start out with, the transparency issues are very, very, very important. I think it all starts with involvement. I wish we could fill the whole room with people asking questions, because, you know, you, the total here, will not be able to swing any election. But transparency is so important. I think everything should be in the public domain. I don't think anything should be through closed doors as far as the, as far as the town political actions go. I think when council goes to closed doors, I get a little scared. However, I'm not scared today because there's nothing better than, don't you feel safe today, right now? There's nothing better than having good guys with guns in the room. So this is very important. And I think this is important for our kids, too, because our kids feel safe with, with good guys with guns in the room, or at least they're present. So that's one of the things I think is very important. Now, the other thing is prioritizing what we do. I mean, the council and the administration is responsible for four items. One, the parks and recreation. Two, the library. Three, the police force. And four, the roads in our town, other than the ADOT roads. Our roads are deplorable. The library works weird hours, doesn't take care of kids or students or seniors. The government works on a four-day work week, and Friday, of course, in a municipal government is probably your busiest day. There's nobody there, but they work four 10-hour days. Now, do the math. That's 40 hours. You know, the same thing if you did the eight-hour days. So I think staffing should be there. And the other thing, the police are so underpaid, it's ridiculous. I mean, I was lucky enough in Colorado Springs to go through a tactical training course where you have simulated shooting. And when I did this, I probably shot more innocent bystanders than bad guys. So when you see what a policeman is faced with, not on a day-to-day basis, but maybe once, once in, maybe once in a year, 10 years, 15, 20 years, that one time makes it so important that they're well compensated. We've got some great police officers. I met a lot of them, not speeding or anything like that, but just in the course of business. I haven't been pulled over yet. Actually, J.D., with his Highway Patrol did, but that was on, that was, that was no ticket. Anyway, but they need to be compensated at least with the surrounding areas, because we're losing, or we will lose policemen, to Cholo, Taylor, Snowflake, because they've got to make that wage. I mean, it's, in next year, I was told by a number of people, one being my son, is that Phoenix, in the surrounding area, or next year, are going to be hiring, you know, 600, 700, 800 officers, because they're understaffed. Now, if we don't compensate our policemen, our detectives, where are they going to go? They're going to go to $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year job. And we've got, the ones that I have met are extremely, extremely competent. A lot of them have 20, 30 years' experience. So we need to, that's a budget item definitely that needs to be taken care of. If we have to sacrifice on the administration, so be it, but we need to compensate our policemen. The streets, as I said, are really in need of repair. Our parks are not taken care of. So we need to structure our budget in such a way where we prioritize the four items and take care of these four items.
Thank you, Roger.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Is it all right if we go out of town? I would like to actually answer that question. Would that be all right?
That's fine. I think we're pretty informal here tonight. Tamara would like to answer the same question. Specifics on the budget was the question. And do, do get into the microphone.
I'm getting close. I think the budget is, it has to be one of the first priorities. Like in any business, you can't spend more than you bring in. Our revenues are going down. They're going to go down again next year. When you're addressing a budget, you can't just say, "I'm going to look at this area, cut it," and that's going to solve the problems, because that doesn't. What solves the problems in a budget is going department by department by department, figuring out which departments are overly funded, which departments are underfunded. They've named the police severely underfunded. Some of our other departments are overfunded. So the way to address the budget is to get together with the council and the department heads, have the budget, line by line, cut out what we don't need, see where we can make changes, move money where it needs to go, so that each department is taken care of, it's ran efficiently, and that makes happier employees. You'll find the reason that people go after salaries to begin with is because in any business, salaries are about 70% of your output, and they are the easiest place to go, especially in government. And I know people don't like that we're talking a lot about cutting salaries for administrators, but if you look at some reports and some studies that have been done across Arizona that cover small towns, we do have a problem with our administrators being very well-paid. And it's very hard for me, as a citizen, to look at a town manager who makes $115,000 a year and $10,000 in other compensations. It's hard for me to look at, at a attorney who's making $107,000 a year. It's hard for me to look at these people making $80,000 a year, $70,000 a year, and then I look at our policemen who are understaffed, only have two on a shift, sometimes three. They work two 12-hour shifts, two 10-hour shifts, and a six-hour shift with only two on. And then from midnight to 6:00 in the morning, they don't even have the backup of the sheriffs or D.P.S. That's a problem. So when I know the administration does not like it, when we talk about cutting their salaries, but we've got to look at the protection of our whole community, not just a few high-paid people in our government. Thank you.
We did jump out of turn there, and I'm going to ask you all that budget question. So Terry, if you'd like to address budget specifics, you look like you have a lot of spreadsheets there in your hand. This could get ugly.
No, it won't. I just, I just, in the interest of transparency, as we talked about earlier, I just wanted to kind of give everybody some of the information that I've been able to dig up, and it sounds like some others have been doing some of this digging as well. For example, some of the comments we've heard about are in-house legal that Pine Top does. According to the information I was able to gather, from the year 2006, we spent about $114,000 on legal services. In 2007, it went up to about $122,000. 2008, it went up to about $150,000. Then in the year 2009 is when we added the in-house legal function, and it went up to $220,000. So that was a $70,000 increase in that one year. Since then, it's leveled down a little bit, and currently, this year's budget is at about $224,000. So it went down, and then it had actually come back up a little bit. So, you know, as a lawyer, I support lawyers making lots of money, but is it something that perhaps we could look at? Perhaps we could. If it makes more sense for us to contract legal services out, I don't necessarily disagree with that. It's something that we could study. There are definitely benefits to having in-house counsel. You prevent a lot of problems that you don't have to then try to fix later. So there are, there are pros and cons to both sides of that. Is it worth the $75,000 that we are spending extra versus beforehand? Maybe, maybe not. But it is something that, that perhaps we could look at. Police department, according to this year's budget, at least out of the general fund, they're looking at it just a little bit under $2 million. Does that sound about right? With maybe 16 assigned to patrol, two lieutenants, one chief, and about six dispatch. And I don't know if those are exactly accurate or not, but that was the information I was given. I think that as a proportion of what we provide as a city, that that might not be enough. We have a population of just over 4,000, which sounds like a tiny little town, but as we all know, the footprint of this town is much larger than that because of all of the vacation homes and second homes that we have in this area. Our patrol officers are assigned to not only protect us full-timers, but the homes and property of everybody who owns property in this town. And that is a job that cannot be sustained on the income model that we currently use, which is a 100% sales tax model. I think that we need to examine other sources of revenue in order to fully support the gigantic job that the police department has to do with what we all admit would probably be an underfunded staff. We generally have become the lowest-paid force in this area. We train our officers, and then we lose them to Cholo, we lose them to D.P.S., and that is not a way that we can sustain a quality public service. I mean, in any government, you know, local government-type situation, you've got the part where the public interfaces with, with the institution. And in the schools, that would be where the teachers are. In the city, that's where the roads are, and that's where the police and public service are. We don't, we don't have fire inside the city, so it's basically police and roads. That's where we, literally, the rubber hits the road. That's where our dollars need to be to create the quality of life that all of us expect. If we're going to attract tourism here in the kinds of increases that we would all love to see, we need to create an environment in this town where people don't get here and look at the crumbling roads and the lack of, of safety, you know, streetlights, at least in a safe amount of street lighting, and, and kind of think, you know, what is this little two-bit town? You know, they want to feel like they're in a place that is, you know, a vacation. It's a, it's a place where they can go to, to enjoy themselves and feel better about themselves. And so I guess what I'm saying is, we have roughly a $7 million budget for the entire town. We have a city manager who makes over $100,000 of that. I'm not one to say whether or not he's overpaid or not at this point, but I think that it would bear looking at in terms of salary studies and what similar people in similar situations make. If he is paid at par, which I haven't studied personally, then I don't have a problem with that, because attracting quality talent is important. And I know I'm talking too long, so I'll shut up. But good talent is an important asset to have in this town. We do not want to lose good talent. But on the other hand, we need to make sure which, which, if we have to pick and choose, we need to decide which talent is most important to us and what's going to make the biggest difference to us as a town. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Can't forget, Joe started that. We're going to have Shannon Rivera talk about budget issues right now. It was, the question was specifics on where you would find the money to make some of these improvements everybody's talking about, and Terry mentioned that perhaps other revenue models are, would be necessary. So with that refresher, Shannon.
Well, Terry just about answered every single thing that I could possibly bring up. No worries. It was a very, very, very great answer, actually. Along with looking at the budget, as everybody here has said, there are little bits and pieces of the budget, of course, that we can pick apart, take a look at, find out if we can get money from other departments and replace it. One of the things, and, you know, we love our town employees, is that in regular business and government, pay is, or holiday pay is eight hours a day, approximately 10 hours, or, excuse me, 10 days a, a year. Right now, our town employees do get paid 10 hours a day for their holiday pay, which, even though it's only two hours additionally, when you look at the size of our town staff, it's about $20,000 a year additionally in pay. $20,000 to $22,000 could possibly give us raises for our police officers. You know, while having the additional pay is great anywhere you go, we do have to look at the bigger picture, and that is protecting our town. So I feel just taking small pieces of the budget and looking at it, such as two hours a day for holiday pay, can make a huge difference for other departments in our town.
Do we have another question from the audience? Yes, we do. Rob, oh, down front, and then Rob. You're next, Rob.
Our restaurant tax in Pine Top Lakeside is 11.6%. Recently, the voters voted on that, and 2% of that tax was due to sunrise, sunset, I'm sorry, in December of 2013. But Mayor Crockett is advocating to allow that tax to continue and to be placed into a general fund. Do you agree with the mayor?
We will start with Joe again on that. I think we started with him last time, and we'll, we're back to him.
Now, first of all, I don't agree at all with what Mr. Crockett proposed. For one, first thing, the way he proposed it was a violation, because he used city Now, the, the tax that the young lady is alluding to was originally called, it was hospitality tax, the three Bs, bed, breakfast, in the hotels. Now, bed, breakfast, and bar tax, okay? When that officially came to the public's attention, this is an example of how our city operates, and this came right out again out of the 2013 budget. They initially wanted to put the bed, breakfast, and bars as a hospitality tax at a 2% rate. And Nervacario at the time asked, and my wife was at this meeting with me, if she was here, she could vouch for the, he asked the people if we would let them vote it in, if all the money that those three entities generated went to parks and recreation in the way of maintenance and putting money aside for the acquisition of Woodin Lake Park. Great idea. They put it through. Well, later on, I started hearing just the bars and the restaurants. I'm thinking, what happened to the hotels? Somewhere from the time that that meeting was held until right now, the hotels were taking, was taken out of the hospitality tax. The tax rate for the hotels was increased to 3%. You know where that money went? It went to finance, ad, and promo. It originally was intended to stay with the other two entities, and all that money was to go towards parks and recreation. to go towards parks and recreation. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you can't trust the administration that's in our town today, and it has been in this town since I've been up here since 1995. To me, if I had been involved with that as far as a city council member, I would have made sure that every one of those three entities stayed where it was proposed to stay. And that was to raise money to try and get the 500-plus acres of Woodland Park. But 2% of it was taken away and then jacked up to 3% and given to add and promo. Personally, I don't think add and promo does that great of a job of promoting this town. And it's going to go away in December, all of it. And you know what the remark was from the town finance officer when I asked him about that? He basically, you know, it's going to go away, so we'll have to close down all the Another question I have, okay, that money is going to go away in December, but they're still collecting it. When that tax goes away, where's that money going to go? If Rich Crockett has his way, it's going to go in the general fund. There was two initiatives passed, I believe, two, or not passed, but they were tried to get passed, I believe it was 2010, that had to do with what I'm talking about. I voted against them, and a lot of you people did too, thank you. And the reason I voted against it, because as I read those initiatives, all I could see was that money was going to be put somewhere else than what it was slated for, and our city manager would have a chance to grab it. Now, Rich Crockett wants to do the same thing again.
10 seconds, Joe.
I think that's enough.
Roger, I'm going to ask you that same question, and then we're going to go to Rob Engels for his question.
I'll try to get us back on the timeline. It always amuses me to think that government can spend our money better than we can. So that's sort of my answer, and you can understand my answer there. And the other bad word is called general fund. Now, a general fund is something that is like a, it's like a, what they used to say with boats and airplanes, you know, it's like a piece of aluminum with a hole in them that sucks out our money. And that's basically what the general fund does. So I'll go back to prioritization of our expenses. And the big thing about revenue is support the revenue generators. And who are the revenue generators but small businesses? The small businesses, the support the town gives small businesses is sort of like the support the town gives the police officers. It's woefully lacking. It's, you know, it's beyond my belief, because when you, as a small businessman, collect the 9.6% tax, 7.1% tax goes to our state, and that's like that boat with the hole and the, you know, the money just goes right down the tubes. Pine Top Lakeside gets the benefit of 2.5% of our tax. And this is what we have control of. And we can control our spending, we can control our expenditures, but we've got to be more supportive of the revenue generators. There are a lot of small business people in here right now. And this is really important, you know, the support of small businesses is just, you know, it's our most important thing, because that's where our revenue comes, that's where our police officers get paid, that's where our streets get fixed, that's where our park gets repaired. So we need to get better support of the small businesses. And that is a main goal of the town of Pine Top Lakeside. Thanks.
Thank you. Rob?
This would probably be appropriate for everybody but candidate Williams, because he made a statement already. Briefly share your opinion of how a four-day work week affects our community.
We're going to start with Terry on that, that's, okay, we're going to start with Terry on that, and if Rob hadn't asked that, I was going to. So if you all could share your thoughts on that. Mr. Green?
Well, it's an interesting question, and I don't necessarily purport to be an expert on workflow management when it comes to the efficiency or the productivity of a five-day, eight-hour work week versus a four-day, 10-hour-a-day work week. But I can tell you that a lot of agencies and entities have gone to it out of a cost-saving measure to try to save on utilities or transportation or things of that nature. There are benefits to it in terms of having offices open earlier and later than normal working hours to accommodate people who might not be able to stop by and take care of business during their own working day. But as I'm sure some of you also would agree, that there are some drawbacks to it as well, and that is, does the same amount of work really get done in a 10-hour day, you know, per hour as an eight-hour day? People get tired and they get worn out, and attention spans tend to wane as the day goes on and on and on. Like I said, I think it would take more data than I have to really answer that question. But the short answer is, I don't really have an opposition to the four-day work week in Pine Top, quite honestly. I think that if there are ways to compensate employees that don't cost money, for example, I can't give you a raise, but we can do a four-day work week, and if that's something they would see as an incentive to stay, then I think that's a good thing. It allows us to retain quality employees without necessarily coming out of pocket more in order to keep them. It's perhaps not an ideal situation. I think it's a compromise situation, but I think I would need more information about the particulars in terms of what Pine Top has been able to achieve before we switch versus after, in order to make an intelligent statement on Pine Top's decision to do that. But in general, those are my feelings on it.
Before you sit down, a short follow-up to that. You work in the schools. How long is a school day?
We have kids in the school, at least at the high school, from roughly 7:30-ish until roughly 2:30, so.
Five, six, seven hours?
Yeah, contact time, about seven hours, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Hayes?
Well, Terry pretty much said it all. As far as needing a little more data for it, I'd like to go back now, we've been doing it for a little while. I'd like to see if we've had any savings from it. But the drawbacks that I see when a town goes to a four-day work week, when we don't have people here on Fridays and when we have people come up to visit, it, they can't do any work, they can't, if they need something with a property, they needed to file any paperwork, need to do anything like that, there's nowhere for them to do it. Also, we do a lot of events. We'd like to see a lot more of those, but those happen, obviously, on the weekends. And so we would need our town employees available. I don't think that it's fair that we have a four-day work week, yet the Parks and Rec Department really can't work within a four-day work week. We have a whole plethora of problems there, because the Parks and Rec Department is responsible for taking care of road maintenance, taking care of the parks, taking care of things that they need daylight for. And a lot of times, especially during the winter, when we have shortened days, a 10-hour workday just does not work for them. So I think for, maybe it's feasible for some departments, but I would think that we need to look at it and maybe adjust it to make it, so that the public is more able to utilize the town on the weekends when they need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera?
While a four-day work week is phenomenal for those who work the four-day work weeks, as Tamara said, a lot of our visitors do come up here on Fridays, and we don't necessarily have town employees here for them.
So?
We are a seasonal community, and there are months in which we are much slower, where we don't have the significant amount of visitors. I think that maybe on a trial basis, that the town may be able to implement a four-day work week or a four-day, four-and-a-half-day work week on the slower months, and put into full effect possibly a fuller Friday during our busier months in the summer and when we have snow. And if we started on a trial basis to where we can work with the employees, work with our visitors, and be able to work with our everyday citizens, we may be able to come up with just as much of a cost-effective plan as what they feel a four-day work week does for us now.
Mr. Russell?
When I worked for the telephone company in California, we went to four 10-hour days. It was a mess. We did less work in 10 hours than we did in eight. We got tired, worn out, and it just totally fell apart, and we went back to working eight hours, five days a week, and a lot of Saturdays. In my opinion, 10-hour days, it doesn't work. I don't think you save anything. If it's working up here, I don't think it's because it's four 10s. It's working up here because there's nothing going on up here right now. There hasn't been anything going on up here since about 2007, when the bottom fell out of everything. We have no developers coming in and building, that might be a good thing. I mean, nothing's going on. So maybe, yeah, the 10-hour days are working here. But if it was up to me, if I was the city manager, I would go back to working five days a week, eight hours a day, because I think the government offices need to be open so they can best serve the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Williams?
I sort of alluded to this early. I'm adamantly opposed to four 10-hour days. First of all, they've done studies on an eight-hour day, and they said the work effectiveness is between four and five hours. So that means, let's see, if it's five hours to give the benefit of the doubt, there's five hours that are totally unproductive. So I think it's better if we did it on the five, eight-hour days, because that way we will have staff here. The other thing I think we could do is move some of the staff, especially dealing with the Parks and Recreation Department, to where they may take two days off during the week, maybe a Tuesday, Wednesday, but are staffing Saturday and Sunday so that the parks are staffed. Because, you know, a lot of things occur during the Saturday and Sunday, especially during the summer. I mean, there's softball, there's all the soccer, there's all the different things. So I'm adamantly opposed to a 10-hour work, you know, 10-hour day for four days. It's, you know, I think it's just a waste of our money, because we can get more effectiveness out of a five-day work week, working eight hours a day.
Any questions from the audience? Three down here in front, Jeff.
Over and above any budget adjustments, how would you bring revenue to this city?
We're up to Mr. Green now, and he has previously stated he has revenue ideas. So here we go.
I do. This is where I get really popular, because a lot of people don't like my ideas about this, but I think it makes sense for our town. I believe that when you have a town with the physical size that we have, and the small population that we have on a year-round basis, we built a system that relies on sales taxes. And we have some of the highest sales tax rates in the state as a result. We can't pay our bills, and yet we charge upwards of 10% for our basic sales tax rate, and then we go higher than that for meals and lodging. Now, does that attract tourism, or does it deter it? I don't know. But here's my point. A relatively small number of us pay the majority of the support that it takes to support the roads and the police and the other services for this entire town, which includes all the part-year visitors and the second homeowners, whose streets still have to be fixed and whose properties still have to be protected 24 hours a day. So how do we do that and spread the burden a little more fairly? I believe that we need to look at possibly a number of different options, but one of the options that I believe that we should look at, and everybody, you know, looks at me like I say in a swear word whenever I say it, but I think we need to look at some very small property tax. Why? Because it's fair to us, the full-time folks who live here. And it could be a, I think we just lost, oh, we're back, okay. It could be a scaled property tax, for example, properties under a certain limit. For example, $200,000 would pay a smaller percent. Properties worth maybe over a certain amount could pay a slightly higher percent. But the point being is that even though we have a lot of area that needs to be covered, those areas aren't necessarily be funded with tax dollars, because those people aren't necessarily up here spending the way we do. So we carry that burden. So we try to export it off on our tours by raising restaurant taxes and hotel taxes, and they get to be so incredibly high that they scare people away, in my opinion. When we're trying to book big events and, you know, some of these big groups that come to visit sometimes, that's some of the things that these groups will look at, is the fact that it will cost them more to do it because of the taxes that we have to charge. If we have a reasonably moderate property tax, which by, by the way, the vast majority of municipalities in Arizona do, we're one of the few that doesn't, then we would have all of the homeowners in this area, including the ones that are only here sometimes, paying their fair share. We'd have a funding source that would allow us to support a stronger police force that could adequately protect those properties plus ours. We'd have more money for streets and roads, we'd have more money for internal improvements and for our parks. So if you want to talk about alternative revenue sources, I think it's time that we start looking at the hard answers. And in my opinion, as a fairly low-income property owner in the town limits who would be subject to this tax, I have supported it since the day I moved here. I believe it's the answer that we need to get us at least on a stronger foothold than we have been. Thank you.
Ms. Hayes?
All right, this is my favorite. This is what I get excited about. When I think about all the possibilities that we can do in Pine Top Lakeside, taxes, that's not one of them. We have an opportunity with beautiful weather, beautiful scenery, to hold major events almost every weekend of every month of the summer. If we held events here that brought up those people that only own a summer home here and had them coming up every weekend, they'd be paying their fair share, because they'd be renting, they'll be shopping, they'll be going to our stores, they'll be going to our restaurants. Taxes are not always the answer. So many times, we look to taxes. We don't need to increase our taxes, we need to increase our events. We need some slow, slow, steady growth in this town. We need it to complement our existing businesses that are here. There are several ways we can do that. You know, a lot of people go, oh, Sholo, they have those big box stores. We have to think out of the box. We don't want those here. We don't have room for them, and we don't want them. What we want are businesses that can hire people to come into the community to work, to eat, to shop. If they are lucky enough to be able to buy a house here, great. But if not, if they live in Sholo, that's fine, too. But through economic growth and through events, we can raise and generate revenue for the town on a much bigger, bigger platform than what we do now. So let me give you an example of some of the events that I've thought about. We have a beautiful lake here. We have beautiful softball fields. We have soccer fields. And we have a lot of trees, and it's nice and cool here. Phoenix, hot desert. They're looking to escape. So what are some of the things that we can do? So I'd like to start a Concert in the Park series that is every other month in May and June, because most of us who coach any sports, we know that starting towards the end of June and July, it starts to get rainy and very windy. So in those first two months of the summer, I'd love to have a Concert in the Park series, but not just a concert in the park that's in the evening. What I'd like to do, and Roger had brought this up before, he said, you know, what about people with those remote-control boats? What about those people? We could have our own Pine Top Cup here. People come in, they pay an entry fee, they drop their boat in the lake, they have races. We charge vendors to come in and set up at Woodland Lake. They can sell their goods. vendors to come in and set up at Woodland Lake. They can sell their goods, they can sell food, pretty much whatever they want. We make revenue two ways, from just that alone. And then, we have a concert in the evening. The whole idea is to have a captive audience, keep them...
Stay with it, it's sporadic, just stay with it.
That keeps them here. And if people, if we can get known for something like that, it makes people want to come back every single year. That's just one of the concerts in the park. I'd like to do Country Day. Get, ask Johnny Johnson if he'd be willing to come out, and see a fishing contest at Woodland Lake. Again, we charge an entry fee. We have a cook-off. How many people think they're the best barbecues, barbecue cooks in the, in the town? Have a contest, have vendors. Pine Top Lakeside itself can make and sell their own T-shirts. There are so many different things that we can do. We can do that at Country theme and have a country band that night. It's all towards family and community, and it's one of the best ways is to raise money. Events bring in large dollars to communities. And on top of it, we could have softball tournaments here every weekend. My, my daughter plays on a club team, and we travel to Phoenix, and believe me, I would rather play here. It is much cooler, it's much more fun for the kids. But we do have to travel, because unfortunately, we only have two tournaments a year here. So, I would love to see more tournaments. And soccer tournaments. We have some of the best soccer players in the whole state, right here in Pine Top Lakeside, yet we don't have soccer tournaments. It, it doesn't make sense to me. So, I think we can generate revenue through utilizing what we have, rather than charging our visitors when they come up those restaurant taxes. Because, that I will agree with Terry, is that we all have to pay those all year round, they only have to pay them when they visit. So, let's scrap that, let it sunset, and let's raise our revenues through different events and through some economic growth. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera?
While Tamara Hayes pretty much covered the summer aspect of it, we also have busy months during the winter in which we receive lots and lots of snow. Now, Sunrise Park and Ski Resort actually just hired a new marketing director, and the marketing director seems ecstatic to be able to draw business and get people to come up to their ski and park. Now, that directly affects us here, because there isn't enough lodging necessarily for everybody who does come up to visit the ski. So, what I would like to do is be able to push that relationship with the new marketing director, so that we can possibly set something up, set, set up, whether it's advertising, or shuttles, or even ski package rates, maybe when all of the lodging at Honda and the, also up at the lodging there at Sunrise are booked. You know, summer is great, but we only have four months of it, just as we only have about two or three months' worth of winter. So, if we can go ahead, implement those peak seasons that we have, we should be able to complement the slower seasons with that additional push and rush of revenue that we can get here in Pine Top Lakeside. Thank you.
Mr. Russell? Sources of revenue?
Here's a concept for you. Large conference center with 200 rooms, with conference rooms, with movable walls, capacity for large-scale educational, realty, city, fire district groups from the entire state and surrounding states to be able to hold summer conferences in our wonderful, cool climate, as well as winter conferences for skiing enthusiasts. The Arizona Ambulance Association and Arizona Fire District Association hold two huge conferences each year. The one in January is held in Laughlin, Nevada, and it covers almost one week. Hundreds of fire personnel attend these leadership classes. It's money that leaves the state. Pine Top Lakeside could be the place to go for this conference if we had the facilities. The second conference is in June in Tucson. It's hot. People would probably love to come up to our town for a conference at this time, if only we had the facilities. Possible location, the meadows behind Eddie's Country Store. Sorry, Rob. Right now, it was, I think, it's designated as a town node. It was a, they had plans for a PUD in there, but it never came to fruition. And this empty area is located in a centralized spot in town. Direct highway access would be available also using the PUD traffic plan for the conference center. Now, here's some benefits of having a conference center. Jobs, tax revenue for town government, increased business for restaurants in town, increased business for local hotels for overflow bookings, increased revenue for local businesses. Local golf courses could offer package deals for attendees. Tours of the White Mountains could be advertised. It will put Pine Top Lakeside on the map as a conference destination. Attract well-known entertainment for indoor facilities. Let me give you an example of that one. A few years back, the Honda was in a jam for some entertainment, and they knew that Merle Haggard was in Texas. So, they contacted him and asked him if he could come to Pine Top and do a concert. And he said, "Yeah, I can come up there, I can help you out." I went to that concert, my wife is very good friends with Merle Haggard, and they stuck him outside in the dirt. And halfway through the conference, he actually made the statement that he would never set foot in this area again because of the way he was treated. And he hasn't. But if we had this concept, I can almost guarantee you that people like Merle Haggard, and all the rest of the country and Western stars, and maybe some other rock stars and what have you, they would come up here, and they would, would perform for us. And I think just one decent conference center up here would probably generate who-knows-what in the way of other kind of small businesses that would come in and maybe build around that conference center, so they catch some of the revenue of the people that, that come up for the conference. And I'll tell you this, this example of the fire department thing, I know for a fact that that is a huge, huge, huge conference. Why do I know it? My wife works for Lakeside Fire. She's the head of management, or head of administration down there. So, yeah, this, this is one of the things we need. We need a conference center in this town, somewhere. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
My fellow candidates came up with a lot of good ideas. One, Terry, I've got to take issue with you, I'm sorry. Municipal property tax, I pay four property tax bills each year, and all the values have diminished. However, my property taxes have increased. So, I would take umbrage with the fact of, of property tax for another reason. We have so many county islands that, that are in our community, that service our community, and the property, the municipal property tax would only be levied on the residents of Pine Top Lakeside. It wouldn't count Pine Top Country Club, White Mountain Country Club, west of Woodland Lake Road. There's so many county islands that, I guess if they were, if it was, if it was a level playing field, and we were all equal, and everybody was equal, then there might be another thought to, to, to that municipal property tax. But it's not a level playing field. Pine Top Lakeside residents, you and I, would, would pay the brunt, we'd pay the, we'd, we'd pay the, the fee, so to speak. I think the, the idea is more in line, rather than tax somebody, is to find out ways we can increase revenue. And I just found out that they had a soccer tournament in Tucson that brought in from nine to 11 million dollars to the communities of Tucson, just by holding a soccer tournament. Now, nobody's going to want to play soccer down there in the, in the summer, in Tucson or Phoenix. We've got to, we've got to have people thinking outside of the box to bring revenue generators up here. I remember they used to have a volleyball tournament, and it was held in, in Honda, or not Honda, but Sunrise. I was told that they had 250 teams in this volleyball tournament. That brought, filled up all the hotels, made Safeway and Eddie's and all those things very, very happy during that period of time. We have a chess tournament up here, and, and we need to support more of that, because they brought a great deal of revenue up here for that period of time. Tamara mentioned the softball tournaments. We've got to find a way where the city or the town participates in the revenue that generates from this particular activity. We have other elements that we can bring up here that, besides the soccer, softball, volleyball, there's so many other things that we can bring up here. We just have to make the venues available, and have the, the communication go out to these other areas, so that they can bring people up here and support our small businesses. That's where we can generate the revenue. As Safeway gets more revenue, the town gets more revenue. As, you know, my little shop gets more revenue, the town gets more revenue. So, that's what we need to look at, is how we can really think outside that box and generate revenue. Because we've got so many smart people up here, and I've, I've talked to small business owners, you know, for the last few weeks, and each one of them has a great idea of what we could do to generate more revenue for all the small businesses. And these ideas are phenomenal, and we need to sit down and, delineate these, these venues, and put them into effect, so that the revenue is generated, and we're not increasing the burden of taxation onto our population.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. It, I'm kind of a camel in some ways, and I don't take breaks, so it suddenly occurs to me, we've been at this an hour and 20 minutes. I'm going to allow a five-minute break here for our candidates, and then I want to make sure that all of our questions down here were covered. Jeff? Could you break now?
I do, I also want to see what she wants.
I was going to remain quiet, but as you know, that's virtually impossible for me. I don't think that tax dollars belong to the town. I think that they belong to the people of Pine Top Lakeside. One of the things that I had proposed as a counselor was a zero-based budget, and although I've not discussed this with any of you prior than tonight, a zero-based budget is where we go through the budget line item, and to truly, you have to justify each one of those expenses by a line item. No department is safe, no issue is safe, nothing is safe. You have to go through every single department and every single line item and justify it. How do you feel about that?
I'm going to ask you to think about that during your break, and we'll come back and ignore that question. No, we'll, we'll get to that, we'll get to that as soon as we get back. So, five or seven minutes from now. Thank you.